Yeah, Mark, since we have a quorum, we might as well go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Thank you.
Can't hear Mark.
Didn't say anything.
Oh.
Well, I'll go ahead and I'll go ahead and do that. So we're going to call the meeting to order. Roll call. We have Mr. Klecker, Mr. Shemani, Ms. Mazanowski, and Mr. Wazoric present. So we do have a quorum of voting members of the planning commission. Next up on the agenda is approval of the March 16th, 2021 meeting minutes of the city planning commission. Those were sent out to all the members. Are any questions or comments on the minutes?
I don't have any, and if there's no other questions or comments, I make a motion that we accept.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. And a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, minutes are approved. Next up, we have a review of the 2021 planning priorities. This is something that we did go over a couple of months ago, but we wanted to revisit. I think that Kathy wanted to share some information with folks and kind of talk about what might be something we might want to start focusing on here off of the priorities list. With that, I can turn the floor over to Kathy.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see everyone's faces. Soon, I think we'll be able to see some in person if that's available to us. I'd like to welcome Tony and Colin. We have two new faces. Well, Tony's in there somewhere, but we get her profile picture right now.
I'm recovering from my COVID shot, so I'm a little not pretty today.
Well, we appreciate you getting your shot, Tony. Thanks for helping keeping us all safe. And Colin, welcome. Colin is an alternate. Tony will be filling in or filling the position that Erica vacated a while ago. Colin, just so you know, Amanda is also an alternate, so she can fill you in on all the great things that alternates get to listen to and provide feedback on. It maybe, I don't know if it's on the agenda, Jake, but maybe towards the end, we could introduce ourselves to everyone and let Tony and Colin have a moment or mark if that's appropriate, if you wouldn't mind adding that. The priorities, I do have some updates, so we do have some updates since the priority list was completed. I don't even remember. It's still a COVID blur in my brain when we discussed it. I think it's been a couple of months, but we just found out this morning that Groundwork USA did accept the city's application to become a groundwork trust. For those who haven't been part of the process or have been following it as closely as Erin Carey or I have, this has been a year and a half in the making. It has been informed by a very dedicated steering committee made up of all the active neighborhood groups who basically looked at Groundwork USA, which is a national nonprofit that is funded and staffed by the Environmental Protection Agency and the National Park Service. And what they do is through this network of trusts, Erie will be, I believe, the 23rd trust throughout the nation. They help fund the startup and the operation of the trust, but the trust pretty much follows the same mission and guidelines as Groundwork USA, which is through youth development and empowerment. They look, they seek ways to improve our environment through brownfield remediation and all the training and workforce that can go along with that, park and trail development, food access. Each trust is a little different based on the needs of each locale locality. And in Erie, Erin Carey can speak at length on this, but just to briefly go over, in Erie, are the trust, again, as it was defined by the neighborhood groups who saw a benefit of this. These are things that we all are struggling with and could need in our neighborhoods, but also in throughout the entire community or the city as a whole, is through blight mitigation and essentially vacant lots that are the outcome of robust blight remediation. What do we do with these vacant lots? How do we turn them into assets to the community? Look at ways to develop them into actually a greenway system, so it's not just a shotgun approach to vacant lots everywhere in the city, but actually providing much needed open space and recreational opportunities in some of our hardest hit neighborhoods. So that is one area of what we'll call land revitalization initiatives. Also, a lot of these vacant lots in our neighborhoods are used for community gardens, urban farms. So the groundwork trust in Erie will also focus on expanding that and upsizing that whole initiative and creating a much more, or really trying to address food insecurities in our neighborhoods. And when you can think about where our blight and abandonment occurs most, it's in the areas in the neighborhoods that need those types of things the most because they've been underserved and under-resourced for so long. But it's all done through actually taking young people, high school and just out of high school age, youth, training them and paying them to do this work in their own communities they live. So we saw this as a win-win-win for the city. And so we're very excited that we've been accepted in six months or so. It will be launched. The city is dedicated to propping this trust up, as is the national network is, and all the neighborhood groups will sit on the transition team as they launch this. So can't talk enough about it because we've dedicated so much time and our livelihoods to this, it seems like. So many props to Erin Carey, who was our project coordinator for getting this work done. So more to come on that. Just for everyone else's, so particularly our new members, we have a bike ped plan for the city. This is the city's first bike and pedestrian plan. It's called Activerie. It was recently adopted. Again, guys, when did we do the guys and gals, when did we do that? It wasn't too long ago, but that was another thing that, you know, the pandemic didn't stop momentum in the city. We pivoted and we pivoted nicely, and we continue to work on things that were really important. The Activerie plan, there's still the website. You can activerie.com. It was a fantastic plan. Actually, I posted something on someone's Facebook today, which I shouldn't be on Facebook because it's just an evil place to be sometimes, but I had to point out that Bike Ped is happening in the city. Maybe not as quickly as some people wish, but we do have a plan. Not only do we have a plan, we have a very workable plan. It is achievable, and there's four major initiatives out of that plan that's already funded and under construction, let's say. So we are definitely people who, if we need to do something, we get on it. We don't wait and we start moving. So a lot of that work will be managed and run by Leanne Parmer, who is the city's traffic engineer. But many thanks to Leanne, who did the lion's share of getting those projects funded through the MPO and other grants that we had applied for during the process. So that does exist. Just also an update on Jake, the sure-term rental that has gone to the city council. They did schedule a public hearing for May. Can't quite remember. It's sometime in May. I'll find out. I was looking through my notes. But that has been scheduled for a public hearing. So those who are following that, that's the Airbnb changes to our zoning ordinance. So did you get the notice from Lori on that, Jake?
I am not sure, but I'm assuming that would have been the May, for the May 19th council meeting.
That sounds right.
Does that sound right?
Yeah, that sounds right. I think that was based on the availability of the stenographer, like it usually is.
Okay.
So I have it in my notes. But anyway, so that'll move forward. And then the other, I think the other item from our priorities, I'm going off script, as you can tell, but it's our historic preservation, historic resources. The historic, the recent amendment to the city zoning code has created the Historic Review Commission, which is the body, and I think Colin, I think you may have been interested in sitting on that commission. So you're probably a little more familiar with it, but the HRC will hold its first meeting as soon as I can get it scheduled, but it looks like May 3rd or the first Monday or second or first Tuesday of the month. I think that's May 3rd, 4th, or May 4th, 5th. Looking about four o'clock in the afternoon. As part of that commission's work, they, as part of the commission, the mayor does have two ex officio appointments, which will be a staff person, and I think that's an update already on the agenda, but just so I won't go over it since that's already on the agenda. But that's what happens when I go off script. We do need a planning commission member to be ex officio on that. I've talked to Jason Wazoric a little bit about that, but I think he has an interest in serving on that. And that essentially just means you would have another meeting on your agenda once a month and show up. It's a great board. I'm super excited about the commission. I think it's going to be one of my favorites, other than the planning commission and the zoning hearing board and the city's redevelopment authority and the land bank. So all those I said, I said participated in. So but they're very highly qualified candidates, and so I'm really very excited about the work that they're going to do. The city had applied to become a certified local government as part of that work, so we could have access to funding and technical assistance. We have heard that our CLG application, which runs through probably one of the most bureaucratic review processes I've ever heard of, but whatever, it goes through the state. The state Historic Preservation Office has reviewed and accepted our CLG. It now has to get many signatures from different departments in the Commonwealth. That's going quickly and so far, no issues. And then it goes to the National Park Service because it is the federal organization that manages historic preservation, which is the National Park Service, needs to sign off. So they'll have, once the feds get it, it actually goes a lot quicker, which is funny. So I'm thinking that we might have that status in place within, by the end of May, which is a little bit sooner than I had thought. So that's all good news. Go ahead, Mark.
Will we be notified of these meetings, whether or not I come to a meeting every now and will we be notified when those are?
They will. They are public meetings. So I'll try to remember. And once they're set, Mark, they're set like planning commission. So I'd say put them on your calendar as the easiest way.
Okay.
And then I'm looking for, sorry, I don't have the priorities up. Let me go through those pretty quickly. Well, maybe if people just wanted to ask some questions. I know, you know, just from some things that we had talked about previously, sorry, I mean, popped in and out of different screens. Some things that I think are bubbling to a high level of priority for us is an amendment that I'd like to see the planning commission take on is an amendment to the subdivision and land development ordinance. That's SALDO, and Colin and Tony will get the best kind of experience going through that work. I see that SALDO is pretty old and antiquated. I think that there's some room for improvement, particularly when it comes to pre-development reviews by the city. We've had, and it probably has remained a little stagnant because the city has not had this much development occurring all of a sudden. So what we have found is that, and I've seen it done in other communities, and it really does work well, is holding pre-application and concept review meetings with developers from concept. I mean, it doesn't even have to be anything, you know, anything too formalized, but actually getting staff around the table with the developer or the property owner as they are developing their ideas before they start acting on any drawings or spending any money on things like that. And the reason that that is so important, and I think we need to be included in a SALDO update to formalize it, is the coordination, not only with the developer, but the coordination among planning, among city staffers. When you find that, and you can, just recent issues that have popped up is in zoning, someone goes in for a variance, they need a dimensional variance to move the building closer to a lot line. And the zoning officer and the zoning hearing board see that there is a hardship, but what happens is that that building might be now too close to the adjacent building beside it, which from a zoning standpoint, you're not looking at those issues. But from a building inspection standpoint, and now it has to be, there's a higher level for fire rating because that building is so close to the adjacent building. Now there's a cost associated with the improvements to the building that could have been potentially identified early on in the process and mitigated. So it's things like that that help when you have more people around the table who understand what development is being proposed, what's coming down the pipeline. And if someone, if someone from one department is requiring a change to the development, it may impact another area that if they're not in the same room talking or the same, is part of the same process, it could get missed until it's too late. And then the developer, it's at a cost to the developer to try to catch up or delay in the development. So I've never, I've never seen any negative come from having that kind of early coordination. And so I'm suggesting that, at least in that area, there's probably other areas that will need to amend and update, but that's certainly one area where I think is bubbling up as a priority. And then I don't know if anyone, because everyone got these in your packet, if I'm not mistaken. So if there are, let me open those. I closed mine accidentally. So if the strategic, the neighborhood strategic plans are, see, that SALDO wasn't even on my priority list. So this is how quickly things change. The strategic plans for our neighborhoods, we continue to do those for the benefit of Tony and Colin. The city's comprehensive plan that you're ever focused chunked out the city into 17 planning areas. And we call them neighborhood planning areas. And it is our goal with the city is to go into each of those neighborhood planning areas and create very specific five-year strategies that will help not only implement the city's comprehensive plan, but also be supported by the residents who live there. So we're doing a lot of outreach through these strategic plans. There's a lot, pre-COVID, post-COVID, there will be a lot of face-to-face that we have with the residents, the stakeholders are in those neighborhoods. We will be undertaking the third one that we've done since in the past three years. And that will be in Fairmont McClellan, which is sort of where McClellan Park and over on that east area of the city exists. We'll be working with the U E CDC and the Eastside Grassroots Coalition as our stakeholders, as our partners. And that's the neighborhood group that works in that area. So we typically align ourselves with the working neighborhood groups. So we have a sounding board as far as what we're hearing and what we're proposing. And we develop it alongside them. The approach is developed alongside them. So we'll be doing that. That'll happen. That'll start kicking off in May. We held back the past year from any of this type of planning work because of COVID. And our neighborhood group, our neighborhood partners were just so very busy dealing with issues of COVID and trying to get, you know, trying to just understand what their needs of their residents are. We, they, we had a whole lot of time to get dedicated to the planning work. And also the fact that we couldn't be face-to-face was a hindrance as well. So that will kick off shortly. So I think that's all I wanted to talk about, Jake. I know there's a capital improvement plan that is still a very vital piece of our priorities that we will need to work on and figure out how to incorporate a five-year capital improvement plan for the city. And I'm hoping, so I'm hoping that that doesn't get lost as a key issue. And then any planning commissioner who's interested in learning more about the capital improvement plan and what other communities are doing with regard to prioritizing how their resources are spent on capital improvements, let me know and we can just start a dialogue on best practices and I'll cut you loose on finding different information. I've got some resources that are my go-to. I've already talked to the finance director and the mayor about really instilling a process to provide us with a five-year, a truly five-year capital improvement plan. For those who aren't as familiar with those, as we do these plans, Activerie Transportation, we're really, or gearing up to do a park, a citywide park plan, we'll do a neighborhood strategic plans. What comes out of that are these projects. Some are aspirational and cost a lot of money, and some are very small. But if you don't have a process that says, when can we afford to do those projects? Or if we can't afford them, when do they need to be done? And how do we apply for grants to get them done? And actually putting that within the context of all the other requests from departments on their needs for capital, their capital needs. If you don't have a process like that, that's where plans sit on a shelf. They'll just sit there because no one's thinking beyond the first or second year of what they need to do. And then if you don't have money readily available, then it just, people kind of walk away from it. So it's really important to the work that the citizen planners like you and the planning department will do is to have a place where we can start plugging in these projects that we're identifying as priorities to our planning work. I said a lot. I'm very sorry. I'll stop. If there's any questions or thoughts, I'd be happy to take them. Amanda?
I'm just, I'm looking at, great, great job as always, Kathy. I'm wondering if either through neighborhood planning priorities or through groundwork Erie. Now, I haven't read everything pertaining to groundwork Erie. But, you know, I've always been very interested in this when it comes to the land bank. If there's ever, if there's any space somewhere to make room for a new home buyer program. And I'm sure I've said this before, and so I'm beating my drum again. But I just would love to see some way to drive new homeowners, that tax base, that, you know, that young energy. It doesn't necessarily have to be young energy, right? But that new energy of city lovers, city dwellers back into the neighborhoods that long and need to have property owners in them and even, you know, revitalize and bring life into some citizens that maybe aren't currently able to buy a home. You know, through Erie City Moms, we've stumbled upon some great programs that, you know, aren't for people who are typically home buyers or are passed over by traditional home buying programs. And just with some of the things that you're doing, Kathy, I just think, man, these just so naturally go together. It feels like a no-brainer.
Yeah, that's, I'm glad you brought that up, Amanda. It's a good point. We've heard it many, many times. But there are some home buyer programs that the city has initiated for people, people and individuals and families through their home investment partnership program. So there is, Veronica Fields manages that through our Community and Economic Development Department.
Okay.
It is income qualified, so you can only make 80% or lower of AMI. And they do have homeowner buyers assistance, and they do have some, now, they do have some grants to help with home improvement. So it's first-time home buyer assistance. We also just met with Neighbor Works, Neighbor Works, which is a national nonprofit that helps with around areas of housing. They have a program. Now, it's not a loan, it's not a grant program, but it's a loan program specifically for first-time home buyers. And they're going to be partnering with that department, with the city, because they have loans for down payments. The only thing you have to have is $1,500 of your own cash to put in, and then they'll cover everything else.
Oh, wow.
Down payment. It is in the form of a mortgage, a soft second mortgage that you pay back over seven years. But Neighbor Works will cover between 80 and 105% of AMI, which is actually very generous. In addition to that, you'd think I was ready for this question, Amanda, but I really wasn't. I didn't know you were going to ask it. In addition to that, the city redevelopment authority that I sit on, I'm going to be meeting with another board member, Chuck Scalise, and the executive director to develop a program particularly around housing, first-time home buyer, home buyer assistance, PMI assistance, and things like that. So we're going to be meeting actually tomorrow and developing a program. And what we're hoping, once guidance, one second, Colin. Once guidance is provided for the ARP funding that the city is getting, we're hoping that some of that funding can be allocated to the housing program that we'll be developing with the city redevelopment authority. Final note, just because I'm going to expend all my knowledge on this one question, is that the city's land bank does prioritize people who want to purchase their properties, does prioritize people who are going to use them as their home and gives them higher points. In fact, that just happened this week. We had three bidders on one piece of property, and only one of them was going to, it was going to be owner occupied, and it went to the one person who was proposing to use it as their home.
Well.
I think there's things happening, Amanda, and then Colin does have a question, but.
Well, while we're on just the role of the programs that offer the first-time home buyer assistance, there's another program that we are making a presentation on in June through Erie City Moms, which is called NACA. And it is specifically, it's NACA, and I can't remember right now, but it's for first-time home buyers who can't get a loan through traditional banks. And Juanita, and I just forgot her last name, but she has just bought her house through the program, and they do first-time home buyer training. They help people become financially, you know, set. And there's no time base for it, but it's a great program that has really helped her gain the scaffolding sort of underneath her in order to take those next steps for home buying. And so, you know, put all these pieces together, and it's an incredible program to bring home buyers back to the city, which I love.
Yeah, love it. Thank you for that. Colin, you had a question? Sorry.
Yeah, I was actually just going to add, I believe I was reading about it last week, that there's a bill that was introduced in Congress that would provide up to $25,000 for first-time home buyers as a means tested keys for it. It's the equity, first, it's not a tax credit, but they kind of frame it as one. It's basically act closing, if I recall, but it's the Down Payment Towards Equity Act of 2021 is what they've called it. Is what they've called it. Um, so that's, right now, I think it's uh, going through one of the committees or next week or so for an initial hearing, but. Um, that one obviously could be pretty, pretty big too, if it survives.
Well, thank you. Great, thank you.
Armand.
Yeah, are we talking about new houses or revitalizing old houses?
It could be either. So, yeah, so the, the, the one that the, that the city, well, even, the Neighbor Works doesn't discriminate against if it's a new home, new build or an existing. The one specifically for the city, they do have funding to help with home uh, repairs. That are needed. But again, it's, it's income qualified.
Okay, I was just curious. I've been looking into building something maybe on the Lower East Side where I was born and spent a good portion of my life. I see all the empty lots down there. And of course, you can't build a hundred and some thousand dollar house there. So I've been to mall housing, looked into prefab housing. And they're the ones that did not want to come to Erie. Mainly because of the building code. They send their people in and they do all the work and the city demands a licensed plumber to do the hookup. Uh, to guarantee that and the company wants their own people to do all the work. And not somebody from Erie doing it because they come from out of town. And uh, it's just something I'm tossing out there that. I don't know what changes are to be made, but as far as electric and. Plumbing, those are just two of the things that the builders talk to me about who, who have these buildings. That they said the problem is with Erie, why they don't come here and do that. And I think prefab houses are much better now than what they used to be. You know, not that you're. Getting anything, but they uh, they prefer to do their own work. So.
And, and they won't, they won't get licensed in the city?
Right. Because they might come and build one or two houses. It's not like they live here or do anything. They send their crew from wherever they're at.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, thanks for that.
Okay. I know Andy won't like that, but uh, it's just a problem that I ran into.
Well, you should shop local then, Armand.
I have. And he, he just enforces rules. He doesn't make them.
That's all I had for the priorities.
Thank you. Uh, you did cover them all, by the way.
Good.
Um. Well, next up on the agenda, it's kind of ties into what you had talked about a little bit as far as the historic resource. Um. Update kind of on what's been going on. And I know you wanted to maybe explore that a little bit more as far as talking about planning commission representation on the commission.
Yeah, we just need to find someone who's, who's willing and and able to represent the planning commission on those meetings. Um, ex officio is that you wouldn't have a vote, but you would be much like a um. An alternate, except that you would, you would be expected to be at the meetings and provide comment, feedback. Help with research, things like that. So essentially, that's, that's the ask. Um. The, because we are gearing up to be a certified local government or CLG. Uh, the CLG process does require that the uh, members of HRC and the staff assigned to that work do have some skill set or background. In historic preservation. So it's not a very rigid um, requirement, uh, but as long as you have things like. Either you, you've worked it within historic preservation, you have a degree in, in something related to historic preservation or architecture. Um, realtors are usually very good candidates or developers, construction work. Uh, who has knowledge about construction, construction costs. Those are all. Good qualities and skill sets that we would want to see in a candidate for this, an ex officio. So I'm not sure, you know, who uh, what, how the planning commission wants to handle that. I know Mark was appointed to the task force. I think you volunteered, Mark. Um, but this would be uh, more of a commitment because the HRC, unlike, unlike the task force, the HRC will continue to operate. Beyond two years, which is what the task force had. So I don't know if you had a preference, if you wanted to nominate, or if they're just as a volunteer. And everyone wants to sort of uh, anoint them, that would be fine as well.
That's something we have to do net, right, at this meeting? Or can we talk about it?
Um, it doesn't have to be at this meeting. I just wanted to put it on, on your agenda. Um, and see what, how you wanted to proceed. It's probably one of the first times you've been asked to do something like that. And there's no policy on how to do it. So we're going to let you make that up.
Okay.
I'm willing to uh, volunteer, but I'm going to give them a hard time because I'm not a, much of a preservationist.
That's why I didn't volunteer.
Well, we do need a balance. So, you know, I think you're going to get that from, from everyone because there's going to be some situations where the historic review commission is at odds with the applicant or. Um, the citizens, not, I hope that's not always the case. I hope they're, they're, they're designed to be there to help. And, and promote historic preservation across the entire city, so.
But Hagan is done with uh, these canal side townhouses if you are skeptical. They're, they're pretty uh, pretty incredible. Just throwing that out there.
It's not skepticism, it's that some buildings, just like cars, become obsolete someday. Some, some are classics and deserve to be saved.
I, I believe that is absolutely the case with historic preservation myself. Every old building doesn't mean that it's historic. Or it tells the story of the city of Erie just because it's old, so.
All right. We have preservationists in town. I think we should save everything. It's a garbage building.
Well, I remember twelfth and cherry when they wanted to say that, oh god.
Is that Cathedral Preps is over there?
Yeah, there's a manufacturing building on the corner that people protested and wanted to save it and it was really an ugly, ugly building.
One right next to it's getting knocked down soon too, isn't it?
Well, the Quinte site, which is at sixteenth and French, if you, I mean, it's mostly rubble and a smokestack. Um, right? Uh, there's people who want the smokestack preserved, saved.
Wow.
So, and I'm not opposed to that. I think, you know, they, they've done it in Pittsburgh. Um, and uh, but. You know, even where you think it's just a sight full of rubble, there's going to be people who are. Championing saving something.
It could be an interesting uh, stealth uh, cell tower.
It could be. Well, it's an odd tour industrial past. They could probably hook it to the Scotts Smokestack and do a zip line to the city.
Yeah.
That's right there. I'm not kidding.
A series of the old smokestacks into a zip line course.
Vegas has that, why can't Erie?
Right?
Slow roll through the city.
I am all for a cross city zip line.
Yep. One day, they name it after me. I've already planted my, my name on it. So if it happens. It's the Rustic Zip Line.
Yeah.
All right. So Jason has, has volunteered with the caveat that he will not be a. He will not be a yes man.
Not rubber stamping.
He's not rubber stamping.
You don't have a vote anyways, so.
Oh, but he's got a, he's got a, he's got a voice.
Got a voice.
Then that's fine.
Yeah.
So Mark, how did you want to?
I mean, as Kathy mentioned, we don't really have a protocol or anything like that to uh, you know, endorse or uh, you know, make a motion to. Uh, we can do that however, or not really do anything formal at all.
That's a great question, or a statement. Well, I endorse, I, I'm, I'm feeling good about it.
Yeah, I mean Kathy, do you, do you have a preference? Would you rather that the planning commission do kind of an official appointment of Jason to the commission? I mean, that's certainly easily.
Well, it's uh, you're supporting his appointment. The, it's the mayor's appointment. So it would be the planning commission has selected Jason as a. As a, an ex officio, our candidate as an ex officio. And I guess if the mayor wanted to go rogue on us and say, nope, I'm gonna. Put uh, Tony in there as a, as a new candidate. So I, I don't think that mayor's going to do that. Mayor wants to know what the planning commission. Uh, thinks, so. If you want to. You do have a quorum, so. That's, you want to suggest, I'd be happy to move that forward to the mayor. Or if you want to wait another month, Mark, that's fine too.
No, there's no need to now, now that we've got somebody so willing.
I agree.
I should, I should ask when, what time of day and what day of the week the meetings are.
Um, right now, it's early to tell, but I think they're going to be from four to five Monday or Tuesday, the first Monday or Tuesday of the month. That's. Seems to be when everyone's available.
That works.
Okay. So if there's no objections, we'll move forward with Jason's name.
Make a motion that represents us.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to recommend Jason to the, as the uh, PC rep to the HRC. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
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 I think I have to abstain here.
Well, I think that covers everybody. So I would, I would expect that means that there are none opposed. So that motion carries. Yeah, I mean Kathy, if, if uh, if you want, you know, kind of a formal recommendation or something like that, like a memo to the mayor's office or something, let me know or. You know, we can just pass that along to him however you'd like.
I'm just going to pass it along to him and then. If he wants something in writing, I doubt he will, but I'll pass it along.
Okay.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you, Jason. Well, next up on the agenda is the, is public comment. I see that we have no additional attendees. Signed into the meeting. Um, so I guess I would um, assume that means we do not have any public comment to be registered. Uh, and that is it for our agenda, other than adjournment. Um. I know that before we adjourn, Kathy, you mentioned uh, maybe the, maybe the other uh. Planning commission members could kind of introduce themselves to Tony. Uh, maybe a little background, Tony can do the same. Um, you know, just kind of as an orientation to each other, I suppose. Um, I, and I guess I can start. Um. Um, Jake Welsh, I'm the chief zoning officer for the city. I also act as secretary to the planning commission. And uh, essentially uh, myself and um, and Tessa, who's also uh, here and is one of our zoning officers. You know, we do all the zoning reviews and handle all of the uh, permit applications that come into the city as far as. Uh, zoning reviews and things like that and amongst other things. But, but that's kind of generally what uh, my, what my role is. Uh, for the city and uh, I'll pass it on to whoever would like to go next.
My name's Mark Klecker, uh, business owner in, in the city. Uh, Andy Zimmerman asked me. Years ago if I would love to join this, this great group of people and, and help the city. And of course, I accepted and been here. I don't know how many years now, four, five maybe, but I'm happy to do it.
Well, I'll go next. My name is Arman Shemani. I am retired. From the city and city halls. Matter of fact, I'm retired from the zoning office. Uh, been a lifelong resident of the city. And I've gone to uh, I would say hundreds of these meetings. And uh, I found them very interesting and uh, very strategic for getting things done. And so uh. Uh, when they were looking for someone to be on this, I, I volunteered to be on the planning commission.
Uh, Jason Mazork, I'm a, a practicing architect in Erie. I started my own firm during the pandemic last summer, JW Architecture. Um, but I've been on the planning commission for a few years. I also spent some time on bladed property review. And I'm a West Bayfront resident.
Hi, Amanda Burlingham. Um, I've lived in the city for twenty years. I own a business in the city. I'm a communication strategist. I've got four kids who attend Erie's public schools. Um, also, I am founder of an organization called Erie City Moms that meets at two public schools and also at Wayne Park Baptist Church. We are a community schools uh, partner and I have been an alternate for two years.
Uh, my name's Tessa. Um, as Jake said, I work in the zoning office. I'm a zoning officer. Um, do zoning reviews for building permits, looking into zoning violations, uh, do some little bit of land use research.
I, I, I see Erin Carey's on. I don't know if she's. There she is. She doesn't get away without.
I'm being a fly on the wall today. Um, hi, everyone. My name is Erin Carey. I'm the neighborhood planner for the city of Erie. Um, and as Kathy mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, basically what I do is um, take a look at the comprehensive plan and break that down. Um, into kind of bite sized neighborhood plans and we work with, work a lot with our neighborhood organizations in town. Um, and do a lot with also property condition assessments and the exterior properties and doing some analysis around that. Um, just so that we can be as productive as possible um, in terms of code enforcement. So, yeah, nice to see everyone.
I've already been introduced to Colin and Tony, so I won't, I, I won't do that again.
I can go next. Uh, my name's Tony. I am a high school teacher. I teach the computing or computer networking program at Erie County Technical School. Um, I grew up both in Erie and in California, so I have like the really big city experience, but then the little big city experience as well. Uh, so I'm definitely excited to be here and, and see how we can move Erie into the future.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and wrap this up. Uh, my name's Colin Russ. Uh, I moved to Erie uh, about two and a half years ago, back at the end of twenty eighteen. Um, my kids um, with their mom here. And so that uh, that brought me here. When I'm, you know, not in the middle of a pandemic, I'm a strategy and uh, tech consultant. So I'm normally on the road, um, but I've been fortunate and been able to spend more time in Erie, uh, obviously over the last year. And uh, I just moved uh, into the downtown area back in December. So I'm excited. See all the work that's going on and all the exciting changes and um, with the weather warming up. You know, excited to have my kids be able to enjoy all the uh, all the new things popping up.
And I believe Colin might have firsthand knowledge about some of Hagan's craftsmanship on uh, West Sixth Street, if I'm not mistaken, Colin.
Yes, I, I moved into uh, one of the canal side uh, townhouses that he uh, finished up. So. They are, they did one heck of a job on these, no doubt about it.
Yeah, they're beautiful.
Welcome Colin and Tony.
Yes, welcome. Thank you, everybody. Uh, you know, we do have one of our members is missing, so he'll have to get caught up with us next month. Um. Uh, that would be Rich Spiker and uh, who is also a practicing architect.
All right, don't miss Frank's comment in the chats. Frank is, that's pretty good.
He is, he is the guy behind the curtain.
I E, we just call him Oz.
I was gonna say, he's Oz, he's Oz.
Well, with that, is there any other, any other uh, information to share? Any other uh, business to bring to the commission?
Oh, I guess. Mark had asked, can we meet in person? I feel like I should give you an update. As best I can tell you. Um, would you like that? Do you have just another? Would you like that? Do you have just another second since we're on the call? So some of you saw on the news that, uh, come June 1st, if everything goes well, city hall will be open again to the public, but it's going to look very different. So, uh, there will be a security system in place, um, security officers, uh, metal detectors. You'll have to get a visitor pass to, to enter. You'll have to have an appointment if you want to see someone. So, and then there will be a, a way to sort of register as a ves- a visitor. So there'll be a kiosk, so it's going to look very different. Um, we're still kind of working out the logistics as far as in-person meetings like this. But, uh, as, as far as, as it will happen now, we can go back to doing hybrid meetings. So everything will be, can be in person and virtual at the same time. These meetings will be held if we do have in-person, which I think after June 1st, we're all technically in person, but you can also attend via Zoom. So it'll, it'll be a hybrid. But it will happen in city council chambers. So the public can just come in and go into, um, city council chambers. So we will move to city council chambers. Logistics of how that works with everyone ho- holding a meeting in city council chambers scares me a little because there's a lot of public meetings that are held in different parts of this building. So, so it's going to look very different. There'll be key, key passes, key cards for every employee to get in and out of certain areas of the building. So that's as far as I, I know now, but I think come in June, you'll have one more meeting like this, but in June we will be in person. You will have to have mask on if you're coming into the building and sitting down. So if you think it's, it's free for all, it won't be, it'll still be a mask or a shield if you have one. But if you do want to come into the building, it will be mask on either for a meeting or, um, just to, to, you know, get, uh, some work done in city hall. So that's as much as I know. If you have any questions, I, I'll try to answer them, but we're sort of learning as we go through this process.
Thank you Kathy.
Welcome.
That note, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good seeing everybody. Soon, like she says.
Bye.
See you everybody.
Bye.
Looking forward.